Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the May 11th, 2023 Shenandoah County School Board to order at 6:30. Ms. Shepherd, do you have a motion for executive session, please?
I do. I recommend the Shenandoah County School Board convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A14, and to discuss and consider several student matters involving the admission discipline or the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record of students in the Shenandoah County schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to that effect, please?
Yes. I move that the Shenandoah County School Board convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A14, and to discuss and consider several student matters involving the admission discipline or the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record of students in the Shenandoah County public schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gutschall. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries by a vote of six zero, and hopefully we'll be returning by 7:00 PM.
Thank you.[131.03]
The Channor County School Board on a beautiful evening like it is in the Channor Valley. I know you could find other things to do, but we are glad that you are all here. Uh, colleagues, do I hear a motion to reconvene in open session, please?
I move that we reconvene in open session.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Walsh, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried by a vote of six zero. The Channor County School Board, certified by roll call vote, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open session requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And second, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convening in closed meeting was heard, discussed, or considered by the Channor County School Board. Each member responds ISO certified when called by the clerk.
Ms. Walsh, ISO certified. Mr. Gutsho.
ISO certified.
Mr. Barlow.
ISO certified.
Ms. Rutz.
ISO certified.
Mr. Keller.
ISO certified.
And Mr. Hudson.
ISO certified. Uh, Ms. Rutz will be, will lead us in the invocation and honor the flag with a pledge, please.
Raise your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, at the start of this meeting, we call on your name. As we run the race that you set before us, help us to keep our eyes on your goals and not on our own. As we falter, give us strength, fresh strength and courage. As we are fleet footed, give us your glory, let us give you the glory. Keep us from wanting to win at others' expense or to count on ourselves better than those at our side. All runners are your children. In a race that you imagine each one is the winner. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Rutz.
Mr. Walsh, that's here.
W T forty. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Gutsho. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keller, I assume?
Was.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried by a six zero vote. Uh, Ms. Shepherd, we have a number of recognitions, and I know you will be proud of these recognitions.
Certainly. Our first recognition is Triplet Tech students recognized as Skills USA state champions, and we are going to invite Ms. Connie Engel to the podium. And before she starts speaking, I would like to congratulate her on her retirement. It's just a few years in education.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, Aden Shepherd. It is my great pleasure to come to you this evening with state Skills USA gold medal winners from Triplet Tech. We recently took twelve students and seven advisors to Virginia Beach to compete in the Skills USA state contest. Competition was stiff in all categories, but we came home with four gold medal winners. And before I introduce the instructors and the students, I have to say that these gold medal winners had a little bit of unusual circumstances in each of their competitions. That usually doesn't happen. For example, our electricity student Ian, they have set plans, and they have to wire, and they have to do all these things, and they gave him a panel box that didn't fit what he had in front of him. So he's banging on the panel box, and he is determined that thing is gonna fit. And it did. Uh, after that, it was no slowing him down. He went full force and did a great job. With our promotional bulletin board students, we were told to be there at eight o'clock sharp. We were there at seven forty-five. No judges. All the contestants were there. We're all wondering what's going on, and we're waiting, and it's ten o'clock, or nine o'clock. Finally, somebody comes over and says, well, guess what? Your judges didn't show up. That's supposed to judge your category. So as soon as a set of judges finish somewhere else, we're gonna pull them over, and they're gonna judge you. So I think was it ten thirty, ten forty-five, we had a set of judges show up. So that's very difficult when you're ready to roll at eight o'clock in the morning, and you don't get to do your thing until ten forty-five. So they persevered, they did a great job, and they brought home the gold. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Dagan Stevens, our electricity teacher, and Megan Haller, our early childhood teacher, who will introduce their students.
All right, so my three that did promotional bulletin board are Madison, Phoebe, and Jason, and I'm gonna let them tell you a little bit about their bulletin board.
Don't be bashful.
This is our bulletin board that we presented at Virginia Beach. So for Skills USA, our theme was "Our Time Is Now," so we wanted to convey that with a clock. And we did have clock arms on the spots right here, and they were interchangeable parts, and we would interchange them, and they would have different tools at the end of the clock hands to represent some of the traits that we had at our school.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thanks for having us here. Um, we do have an exceptional group of students here with you tonight. Ian, he loves, I don't know if you're gonna notice this, but he loves talking in front of people. A big fan of that. Before he talks real quick, I just want to tell you, Ian competed as a junior in the district electrical competition, and he actually won the Darren thing. I couldn't believe it. He won it. He also won another competition. So he didn't go for the district electrical competition. He went for a different one.
Last year.
Yeah, last year. And then he competed this year again in the same competition. We're talking twelve, and we had fifteen students competing from other counties. So he won the, he, he got, he was able to go to states again. There was about sixteen, yeah, about sixteen competitors he had, and he won the Dagone thing again for the state. So you're looking at the state winner here in, in all of these competitors, and uh, these students can be very successful. Uh, they, they are very successful, successful in whatever they choose. So we'll see if Ian wants to explain how well he did at the competition, what his project actually was.
Sure. So we had a, it started out with a four foot by eight foot wall section. All right, and there was, you know, there were studs, five, four studs, three, uh, sixteen inches on center. And we had four circuits we had to install, and we had to run them each to a panel. One was like a regular, you know, a regular light switch light circuit. Another one was a dryer circuit. The other one was a kitchen circuit. They all involved different gauge wires. They all had different, different codes that you had to follow. And then once that was complete, we had a conduit bending section where we had to bend. It was just a ninety degree bend with offsets and boxes, a box on each end. So then that was, that was a little bit challenging, a little bit different. And then at the end of it, we had a, I'm sorry, this was the beginning. At the beginning, we had this test. It was a twenty, twenty or twenty-five question test, and we had to go through the code book and had questions about the code. And yeah, after that, we did the, we did the four foot by eight foot wall section with conduit. But yeah, it was, I wanted to say, was it three and a half, four hours?
Three and a half hour competition.
Three and a half hour total.
Oh, had three and a half hours to do it. It was, it's quite challenging, so.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Mr. Stevens, would, would you hire out Mr. Weimer?
Oh, absolutely.
How do you go about doing that? Because I could use somebody.
You, you wanna hire him. He's had multiple job offers already. He's taken interviews, actually.
Mr. Stevens, is he, what year is he? He's a senior?
He's senior. He graduates this year. Yep.
Good luck.
I think he's planning on being a liar.
So our next recognition is our FCC LA students who competed at the twenty twenty-three state conference. And the first person to introduce his winners are, is Mike Dorman from Mountain View High School.
Good evening, members of the board. Ms. Shepherd, it's a pleasure to be here again this month, recognize some of our kids here and some of their accomplishments at the state level. Have with me here Ms. Ashley Painter, who is our FCC LA advisor. And we do have some kids that weren't able to make it tonight because of some other commitments, but we did get a few of them to come with us. And before we even start and let her go, I just want to say how proud I am of Ms. Painter. Our FCC LA program's not quite been where it's needed to be over the years, but you know, she's been with us a couple of years, and she's getting our kids to compete at the state and the national level, and I couldn't be more proud. So without further ado, Ms. Painter, you wanna brag about your kids?
Okay, absolutely. Good evening. Um, at the state conference, Mountain View High School was recognized as a gold level, gold level outstanding chapter. Um, we took along nine kids with us, which is the most we've, we've ever taken with us to state conference. Um, and we can be, competed in several different events. Brianna Franklin and J.C. Gonzalez, um, who are both seniors, they're not here, um, they have sporting events this evening. Um, they placed first and earned a gold medal in nutrition awareness. Reese Hedrick, who's also a senior and in sporting events, um, also earned a gold medal in CF, Yes to FCS Education. Lauren Haller, Haley Lutz, and Cassidy Baker, who are ninth graders, placed first and earned a silver medal in entrepreneurship. Olivia Dellinger, this is Olivia right here. Olivia's a junior, and she placed third, um, and earned a gold medal in professional presentation where she gave various presentations to organizations about, um, the importance of postpartum depression. Um, Hannah Whitaker, um, who's a senior, placed fourth and earned a gold medal in Focus on Children Level Three. And then Ms. Juliana, who is a tenth grader, placed fifth and earned a gold medal in Focus on Children in Level Two, where she competed, completed a project, um, where she taught a lesson to the fifth grade Family Consumer Sciences class at North Fork, um, about the importance of self-esteem and self-concept. Um, Bree, J.C., Reese, Lauren, Haley, and Cassidy are all gonna advance to the national star event competitions in Denver this summer. Um, so we'll have a pretty big crowd going with us. And also, one of my seniors, uh, who was mentioned previously, Reese Hedrick, she also was one of two seniors in the state of Virginia who, um, was recognized in the Say Yes to FCS Science Ceremony, where she signed as a future family and consumer sciences educator. Um, she was presented with an award by Heather Jones, Family Consumer Sciences Program Specialist at, at the Virginia Department of Education. Um, and so Reese will actually be attending Bridgewater College in the fall, um, as a Family Consumer Sciences major, and will become hopefully one of our teachers here in Channor County. That's her plan to stick on that. So, congratulations.
So Dr. Connie Rusher, would you come up? And as you were coming up, we would like to celebrate your retirement as well.
Good evening, Chairman Housley, member of the board, and Mrs. Shepherd. Thank you for having us here this evening. Um, it is my honor to present Michaela Omari, who is our Family Consumer Science Teacher and FCC LA advisor for Signal Knob. Uh, Michaela is sharing her passion with our students. She is a former state officer graduating from Stralsburg High School, very active in FCC LA, and she is really growing our chapter as well. And I'm gonna let her talk more about the number of students that we took and the honors that they received.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us a few minutes of your time to tell you about the success our Signal Knob Middle School Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America chapter experienced at the State Leadership and Recognition Conference in Virginia Beach this past April. As Dr. Rusher said, my name's Michaela Omari, and I'm the Family Consumer Science Teacher and FCC LA advisor at SKMS. I had the pleasure of representing our chapter, school, and community on the state level. In attendance, we had seventeen students from Signal Knob participate in star event competitions, keynote sessions, Virginia State meetings, workshop sessions, and enjoy all that the conference has to offer. Awards are presented to FCC LA chapters as well as to individual students or groups who compete in star events. Students are recognized for proficiency, proficiency and achievement in chapter and individual projects, leadership skills, and career preparation. Following the weekend's festivities, we have the following results. Sixth grader Sydney McCarter earned a bronze medal in National Programs in Action. Sixth grader Sierra Stanger placed second and earned a bronze medal in Career Investigations. Seventh graders Mackenzie Jenkins and Cameron Boyer placed first and earned, earned a silver medal in Chapter and Review Portfolio. Seventh graders Logan Gimble and Ryson Walters placed first and earned a silver medal in Event Management. Seventh graders Alexa Gurrell and Hadley DeMarco placed second and earned a silver medal in Repurpose and Redesign. Seventh graders Cadence Turnmeyer and Brenda Yavec placed second and earned a bronze medal in Promote and Publicize. Seventh graders Charlie McHale, Trinity Pringle, and Katia To Diallo earned a bronze medal in Focus on Children. Eighth graders Sienna Locklear, Faith Turner, and Tatiana Smith earned a silver medal in the Chapter Service Project Portfolio. Seventh grader Lila Musterman served as a Star Event Room Consultant for the Interior Design Category. Alexa, Hadley, Cadence, Brenda, Mackenzie, Cameron, Logan, Ryson, and Sierra will advance to the National Leadership Conference in Denver, Colorado this summer in their star event categories. Sydney McCarter will represent our chapter on the national level as a Star Event Room Consultant at the conference. I am so lucky to have had the opportunity to work with these amazing students who devoted so much of their time and attention to our organization, and I though, and I know they will continue to make us proud at the National Leadership Conference this summer. In addition to their star event competitions, Cameron Boyer was chosen for the Spirit of FCC LA Award by the Virginia FCC LA State President, and Tatiana Smith was selected to receive the Legendary Leader Award from our chapter. Our chapter also received recognition in the Families First Student Body, Career Connection, and Community Service National Programs. We were also recognized as a Silver Level Outstanding Chapter Award. As you can see, our chapter is made, has many things to be proud of. We would like to thank you, the school board, for approving our trip and providing our chapter with this great educational experience. These conferences and opportunities allow our students to grow and become better leaders in our school and community. Your continued support is greatly appreciated. I've enjoyed sharing some of the highlights from our conference, and thank you again for the time and attention you have given us today.
Hazerman, Stralsburg High School.
First, I want to say that, um, it makes my heart proud because, uh, when I see Michaela up here, she was one of my students, and then Ashley was also a long-term stuff for me, so it just makes my heart proud when these people get up here. So thank you for allowing me to see that. Um, so you heard about our conference, you've heard the things in Virginia Beach. Um, our chapter, uh, was recognized as a Platinum Level Outstanding Chapter. This award is given, um, to chapters to develop and carry out a diverse and complete program of work. Uh, this is the highest level of chapter recognition that you can receive for, at our state. Um, in terms of some of our individual awards, Claire Keith and Sam Ronward were recognized as Power of One completers. This is an award given to members that complete all five of the units of Power of One. Seven of our members competed in star events. Some earned the right to compete at the national level, and you get the right to compete if you're the top two in, in each category. Um, I would like to recognize these members. Tenlee Rusher is a junior. Uh, she competed in chapter in the She competed in Chapter and Review Display, and she earned a gold medal and a first place trophy. Claire Keith competed in Career Investigations, Level Three, and she also earned a gold medal and a first place trophy. Paige Haserman, she, and they're all juniors so far, competed in Teacher Train, and she earned a gold medal and a first place trophy. Kennison Huff, also a junior, competed in Hospitality, Recreation, and Tourism. She earned a gold medal and a first place trophy. And Sam, Sam Reinhardt, my lone senior here, competed in Leadership, and he earned a gold medal and also a first place trophy. Kennison and Sam actually both earned perfect scores in their event, which does not happen often, so that was quite a recognition. Four of our members, Sam, Paige, Kennison, and Claire, will represent Virginia at our National Star Event Competition this summer in Denver. Another award that we were notified at this meeting that we received was a chapter award. We are going to be recognized as the National Families First Program Award winner for the high school division. Along with a plaque, will also receive $1,000, and our project was entitled Pasta Tivity, and members came up with this, and they created a take and bake meal that each month we randomly pick staff members to receive. And we sent it home with them with a packet of ideas that they could do, so while their pasta was being fixed, they could spend quality time with their families, so very family-focused. And some of our staff just love this, so it was a very rewarding project. So we're very thankful for this opportunity, and we do appreciate your support, and we are looking forward to going to Colorado this summer, so thank you.
At the 2023 State Conference, Nick Zimmerman was recognized as a Master Advisor. This award recognizes advisors who have been successful in advising an affiliated chapter for a minimum of three years, promoting the organization, operating an integrated chapter with a balanced program of work, facilitating youth-centered activities, and keeping abreast of new happenings within the organization, so congratulations, Nick.
Thank you. Good evening. So I just want to let you all know, for full disclosure tonight, my administrative team did not drop me off at the door and drive away. They are all three attending our yearly FFA banquet this evening and send their wishes regarding our FCC LA chapter. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Shepherd, community members, and members of the school board. The last two years have been a true blessing teaching Family and Consumer Sciences and being the FCC LA Advisor at Central High School. As we prepare for great change to come in the upcoming weeks and months with our school leadership, our Falcon family remains the same. There have been many challenges, but there have been many rewards. This year, Central High School FCC LA was recognized at our State Conference as a Silver Level Outstanding Chapter and received chapter awards for participation in four national programs: Career Connection, Community Service, Families First, and Student Body. In star events, Haley Rush, who is working tonight, earned a gold medal and placed sixth in the country in the preliminary rounds of chapter website, and has the opportunity to advance this summer to Nationals in Denver, Colorado. Ellie Wetzel and Gwendolyn Swank earned their gold medal in Focus on Children Level Two and are playing at soccer tonight. And finally, we have senior member with us tonight, Mackenzie Minton, who earned a gold medal in Focus on Children Level Three and plans on pursuing a career in education in the future. Finally, in the midst of Teacher Appreciation Week, Mr. Chair, I would like to take just a moment of personal privilege to recognize a former teacher who has made an impact on CHS FCC LA who is here tonight. This individual, this individual received her next calling in the midst of this current school year and shifted to her new role as a Transition Specialist for SCPS Special Education at Central Office. She left an impact on our Falcon family that is not to be forgotten, even after she supported her own daughter in Family and Consumer Sciences and FCC LA at Central High School. Ms. Mumal has chaperoned trips, supported service projects, and been a sounding board for high-impact instruction and inclusivity of all students in FCC LA and FCS Education. Ms. Mumal, would you please come forward? We would like to thank you for your time, your commitment, and your support of Central High School, and the time that you spent with us, and we would like to wish you well in your new role at Central Office. The love and support that you have for us and continue to have for us is still felt within the Falcon family, and we love you. Thank you all.
Ms. Mumal. So a lot of CTE awards tonight. Virginia ACTE announces the 2023 Excellent Award winners. The Virginia Association for Career and Technical Education announced the 2023 Professional Development and Leadership Seminar its state winner for the ACTE Excellent Award National Recognitions. Winners were announced for the Teacher of the Year, Administrator of the Year, and the New Teacher of the Year. The Administrator of the Year is Todd Lynn, our Supervisor of CTE and Workforce Outreach for Shenandoah County Public Schools. This award recognizes administrative CTE professionals at the school, district, county, state, or federal level who have demonstrated leadership in ensuring teacher and student success and have made significant contributions towards innovative, unique, and effective career and technical education programs. Mr. Todd Lynn, I saw him earlier. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jennifer Stratton, Director of Student Services.
Darla Mumal is part of my staff.
Good evening Superintendent Shepherd, Chairman Helsley, and Board members. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you to introduce to you an integral part and member of our team at Shenandoah County Public Schools, Ms. Katherine Hudson. Ms. Katherine Hudson has worked in our school division for six years, four years as a special education teacher, two years as our 504 Specialist. We are recognizing Katherine for receiving the Virginia Association of Special Education Facility Stakeholder of the Year Award. This award recognizes individuals from local agencies and other school partners for their contributions and efforts to the success of our students that are placed in private day schools. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Katherine Hudson.
Good evening, Ms. Shepherd, Chairman Helsley, and members of the board. I am a little surprised by already having to have to come up here, so, Mr. Zimmerman. And on a personal note, that FCC LA person that I saw to graduation, my daughter, is also a fine teacher in this division at WW Robinson, so we are, we are a family of commitment to our, our community and our kids. I'm very pleased and honored to come before you again this school year in order to bring attention to the Competent Learner Model. It's otherwise known as CLM. CLM is a program that provides weekly classroom coaching and an online course of study that encompasses over 120 hours of professional development. This is a demonstration, another demonstration of commitment to Shenandoah County schools and most importantly, to our children. These hours are completed in addition to the Teacher's School Day. CLM is evidence-based instruction, it's collaboration with school and home, instructors learn how to motivate their learners to participate, coaching teachers on direct and delivery of instruction, and we mostly make learning fun. We have with us tonight two of our fine teachers, and they have completed Competent Learner Model Course of Study and are receiving their CLM Certified Instructor Certificates. Standing next to me are Lindsay Pence, she's been in the county for three years as a special educator at Central High School, and Jamison Cook, who's also a special education teacher at Central for two years. Thank you, ladies, for your commitment to our students.
Well, you've done well. Thank you. And for the, the parents that came with your sons and daughters, we appreciate your support. I know it was a lot of time going to school picking them up and being there on time and whatever, and you can see the effects of what the instructors did by the awards they received from the state level, whatever. So thank you, parents, and keep up the good work. Now, we'll take a break. Hey Jake, tell Dad I said hi. Your father.
Abby. Abby.
We only got three speakers.
No. We got six or three.
What time does that start?
15 minutes.
I don't think it will be over 15 minutes. I didn't know you was going to be here. Jane sent me this. You got it? Okay, then I want it. You take care of it.
Then you won't have to.
Right. She didn't tell me you were coming.
She didn't know until about an hour ago.
Shenandoah County School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings and during public meetings. School Board members do not respond to public comments during meeting or hearing. Each speaker will speak up to three minutes. The board generally allows up to 60 minutes for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. If there's a large number of speakers, the board may limit the total time that each speaker will be speaking. All comments should address a matter related to Shenandoah County Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comments that involve a complaint about individual staff member, personnel action, a student this very matter, or a complaint about individual student or pending litigation. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with other people's views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, to the superintendent, to a staff member, or to the auditor. Speakers will not engage in personal attacks. The speakers were asked to sign up as you entered the room here, and we will be called in order that you sign up. And the first one is Mr. Charles Street.
I hope everyone is well, elected school board members, Superintendent Melo Shepherd. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. We really have some good kids. Congratulations to the state and national winners. They're great. First, I'd like to honor the teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. Also, I'd like to wish all the mothers a happy Mother's Day coming up on Sunday. Next, I'm glad it's been two weeks, and probably not a good thing, it's probably a good thing there wasn't an opportunity for public comment on April 27th. I'm not the only one in this county that is upset about the shenanigans happened since the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. That's what it looked like to me. It was said a short window of four days, well, I'm sorry, 96 hours is long enough to pick up the phone and make a call to notify everyone. Yes, in the real world, things just happen. Things change, but if you don't notify people, that's how we create problems. Things don't just happen unless we let them happen. As a school board, you have policies and procedures to follow. You would think that something learned 22 months ago, when the name change was decided in just eight days, on that occasion, the board left out a board member. This time, there's three board members left out, and you can call it what you want, but it's still the same result. First, the name change, the previous board spent $350,000 that could have been used more wisely, and along with IRS problems, now you're talking about a lot of money that could be used to improve a lot of things for the school, the people, the students, and the teachers. If you truly want to help the teachers, bus drivers, custodians, and cafeteria workers, then do it. The way I see it, the high end gets more money and the lower end gets peanuts, and that's just my opinion. Sorry, but right now, you want us to trust this board, and this debacle just doesn't make the public feel real good right now. But the public will be able to have their voices heard in a few months. On a positive note, I'd like to congratulate all the graduates, the class of 2023, on their finishing their chapter of their life. Good luck into their future. I'd also like to thank, also like to wish the athletes and the postseason teams, good luck to them. Hope everyone has a good summer break. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Mr. Stephen Heichman.
Good evening, school board members and Ms. Shepherd, and thank you also for allowing me to speak this evening, and a big congratulations to all of the students that we recognized here this evening in their achievements, the FFA, the FBLA, all of the trades at Tripletac I am a big fan of and supporter of for the, for the future of this country, actually. So as the year comes to a close, it's good to reflect on the So as the year comes to a close, it's good to reflect on the steady success and attendance that the weekly religious education had this year, and we look forward to next year as we will be inviting the second, third, and fourth grade, uh, students to participate. Uh, last week at the, uh, FFA banquet at the Southern Campus, it was good to see, uh, the central office well represented. We had School Board members there, School, uh, Board of Supervisors, Ms. Shepherd. Uh, it was good to see everybody there, and the, the FFA is a very, very strong program. We, uh, do wish Jay Jarrett a happy retirement. In his forty-two years of, of, uh, teaching, he has been an inspiration to many students, and we wish Jay the best. Also, uh, Ms. Pangal and, uh, others that are retiring from the school system this year, uh, we wish them well in, uh, in days to come, in their retirement. At the, um, at the December and the January School Board meeting, we heard, uh, a lot of talk about, from, from you, the School Board, about policies, and policies, and policies, and holding people accountable for their actions. Last month, at the budget issues, uh, with the Board of Supervisors, um, that issue that occurred was wrong and completely against, as we all well know, the Virginia Code Section twenty-two point one dash seven nine. Uh, it was also said that it was just something that happened, and that has to be incorrect when some of the School Board members were not even aware of what had occurred until after it happened. So the question becomes, where is the accountability? What we would remember is a couple of years ago, or excuse me, a couple of weeks ago, over in Richmond, the Director of Education made an honest mistake in the Virginia Education Budget, and as my understanding, within a week, she was removed. The, this new School Board has been working very, very hard to rebuild trust with the Board of Supervisors and the taxpayers of the community. Honesty and transparency is the only way that business can function efficiently. I urge this School Board to address this issue properly. And as I had previously stated, I had the, uh, honor and the luxury of growing up on a family farm out in Conningville, and a big thing that my parents taught us was there's no right way to do something wrong. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker is Pastor Katie Gogwane.
Ms. Shepherd, School Board, staff that are lining the walls, I thank you so much for this time. I'm here to speak to you about Spring Forward, which is a partnership after-school program that takes place at Edinburgh Lutheran Parish, Zion Lutheran Church in particular, and is supported also by the Hamburg Ruritan Club and the Shenandoah County Public School System, for which we have been so grateful. Formed in two thousand and eight, we have enjoyed seeing students continue to grow and thrive in their efforts. This past school year, we had twenty-four sessions from February through April, the first time we were back together after COVID, and our sessions focused on enrichment and homework assistance as needed. We had seventeen scholars registered, ten who were returning, and we were joyed to see them come off the bus and see how they had grown through the COVID years, and seven new students. And our grades this year were, um, second grade, I'm sorry, kindergarten through ninth grade, so that was quite a spread. We had twelve returning tutors that came back with their, um, many of them being retired educators and their backgrounds in education, two former, um, Spring Forward scholars who are college-bound, and we had six guest speakers, and also a visit from a therapy dog and a therapy mini mule, which was great. So I didn't know mini mules could be therapeutic, but they are. So we plan to resume in the fall, and that date will be determined at a later time. But we wanted to take this time to say thank you. Thank you to the Shenandoah County Public School Transportation Department, especially to Lucas Long and Kimberly Wilson for their excellent cooperation in working with us as they bring students to our church, to bus driver sixty-one Amber Wetterhand for her patience and her loving care of our students as they rode her entire route before being dropped off at our door, to Director of Human Resources Linda Hodges, who came and did an in-service boundary training for our tutors, as well as facilitated in the fingerprinting process and the background checks, and to Ms. Shepherd, who came out and visited us and stayed for dinner that night. Special word of thanks to our dear Chair Marty Housley, who has been a supporter of Spring Forward since the inception in two thousand and eight, who was a tutor and continues to find ways in which he can support and advertise this program. We are indebted to the ways in which you made connections for us in those first years with important people in the school system, as well as continuing to be a safety net and a support to our program. Thank you all for the support you have continued to provide. We look forward to the future together.
Thank you. Would someone else like to speak that did not sign up? Yes, sir.
I'm planning on speaking this evening. Um, just one thing I was thinking about, I was talking about the extra money that was given to you guys at the Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to put it out there, maybe you all could discuss it. Um, we all know the one thing lacking at our schools is security. Could we take that money and reappropriate it and, uh, possibly hire a floating SRO to go between the schools to cover long-term outages? Uh, I know right now there's one out on paternity leave or getting ready to, and I know the Sheriff's Department would probably appreciate that, so if it's available for a conversation, I'd love to, uh, hear you all discuss it. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, colleagues, you'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I said move.
Motion made by Ms. Rutz. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barlow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried by six, zero vote. Okay, I reckon we are in instructional. Three, uh... I recognize, um, Ms. Boise, summer school.
Good evening, Chairman Housley, members of the board. We are excited to present to you about Summer School two thousand and twenty-three for our students in kindergarten through eighth grade. This year, we are excited to be able to continue the work that we started last year, where we've been able to integrate-
Thank you.
-high-quality lessons with field trips for our students using CARES money that allows us to take those extra opportunities to get our students out into the community. The foundation of our summer school program is really on building students' background knowledge, which we know is their research-based strategy for accelerating their learning. We know that all new learning has to build on what students already know, so our intention is to provide students experiences out in the community to build that background knowledge. For elementary, our theme is Wild About Learning, and Joe, if we would be able to slide over to elementary, that'd be good. Perfect, thank you. Can you slide down? Thank you. Um, our theme is Wild About Learning, and each of the four weeks, we focus on a different animal group. The first week is our Paws Week, where the students will be learning about mammals. Then we have Scales, where they're learning about reptiles. We have Finns for our Aquatic Week, and Feathers for our Bird Week. And you can see on there the different field trips that they'll be going on, um, and Robin will tell you about that in just a minute. But in addition to that, we also have high-quality lessons that they'll be engaging in, in the classroom. Our goal is to integrate all of the content areas that we're focusing on. So all of this is based on our science content, where students are learning about animal adaptations, habitats, the life cycle, living systems. And then from there, we're integrating English lessons with high-quality read-alouds. I brought a few to show you. They're mostly rooted in nonfiction, because we, and tends to be more challenging for students, so we want to expose them to that and build that vocabulary, so they're able to understand it. So this one is Bored in the Wild, a really sweet read-aloud about, um, the different needs that all animals have and how those needs are provided for, based on what type of animal they are. So this one is, "All Animals Need Shelter," and what types of animals, uh, provide different kinds of shelter. I've got another one for you. "What If You Could Sniff Like a Shark?" And so on each page, students get to pretend like they're a different aquatic animal and see the different qualities that they have. So this page in particular is "What If You Could Shapeshift Like a Giant Pacific Octopus?" They can actually squeeze down to the size of a soda can. So it shows a student jumping through a fence, um, so they get to put themselves in that situation. Students will also be writing every week in connection to their reading that they're doing, and they'll be engaging in research-based lessons to help them with their decoding. Our math lessons are based in content from the Virginia Department of Education, so we know it's high quality, and the word problem students are engaging in relate to this content. One of the problems that they have to solve is to determine how many eggs might sea turtles lay, and so they look at how many eggs one sea turtle would lay, and then determine how many sea turtles they have, to see how many eggs they would have in total. They're also creating a pet supply store, where they have to engage with money, certain grade levels have to make change, others are labeling appropriate prices for different items. Um, and Robin is going to share with you what our field trips are going to do to support this classroom instruction.
Good evening. So our students are going to be traveling on three field trips this summer. They will be visiting Blandy Experimental Farm, that's UVA State Arboretum. Um, our kindergarten through second graders are going to get to experience a program to learn more about mammals, and our third and fourth graders are going to learn more about birds while they're there. Our schools are also going to be traveling to Seven Bend State Park again this year, where they're going to learn about our native wildlife and aquatic creatures. That field trip is going to be in partnership with the State Park Rangers, as well as Friends of the North Fork and the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. And then you will notice that your handout is a little bit different than what was on the screen earlier. I'm excited to say that just this afternoon, we were awarded over $8,000 in grant money to take all three elementary schools to Frontier Cultural Museum, and they will get to ride charter buses there. So that's very exciting. Um, they will participate in a Plants and Animals and Water and Wetlands STEM Program and, excuse me, and, um, Stanton at the Frontier Cultural Museum. Um, in addition to those field trips, we also have some exciting guest speakers lined up. Barcy Ranch out of Berryville will be bringing in their animals and be doing an animal adaptation program for all of our schools. Um, we're also working with some of the FFA groups to do presentations at the elementary schools, and we've also reached out to some local veterinarian offices to work in some career connections with animals. Um, and then new this year, we have a resource specialist at each of the schools, and they're going to function similarly to how our block specialist teachers, um, operate in the elementary school. They'll be pulling classes to do special activities, they'll be doing arts and craft activities, STEM activities, research projects, um, and they'll also have an opportunity to design their own art, music, physical activity, or thinking skills lessons during those times when they're pulling students each day. When they're not instructing classes, they are going to be acting as, um, support by visiting classrooms and assisting with instructional needs. Our culminating project this year is going to be a zoo event. Students are going to be researching an animal of their choice and learning all about its habitat. They are going to complete a poster project on their animal, and they're going to use their research to design a habitat and a model of their animal that is going to be featured in a zoo exhibit, so we hope that families in the community will come out and visit that when that takes place during the last week of summer school.
Good evening. Um, our middle school program is called Exploring Virginia, and in addition to what Allison and Robin already talked about, uh, we will be engaging our middle school students in the geography, history, economics, and tourism of Virginia. Uh, during our geography unit, students are going to create a model of Virginia's five regions and map out Virginia's major roadways. Students are going to take a field trip to Elizabeth Furnace in Fort Valley, where they will not only explore the geography of our state, but learn about the pig iron furnaces, which were utilized in the eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. Uh, students will also explore foods from the regions and cultures of Virginia. Um, as our middle schoolers learn about the history of Virginia, they will have the opportunity to create interactive timelines and use 3D printing to create scenes that are imperative to Virginia's history. Students will engage in reader theater, featuring important historical figures, and additionally, our middle schoolers will also be visiting Frontier Culture Museum to see firsthand what colonial Virginia was like. During our economics unit, um, students will be visited by First Bank to learn about personal finance, and by Georges to learn about industry in Virginia. Students will have the opportunity to pitch a unique idea for a good or service that will benefit Virginia. Finally, we will learn about the importance of tourism and revenue in Virginia. Students will plan a road trip and create a postcard to send along the way on their trip. Our middle schoolers will visit Luray Caverns, or a well-known tourist attraction in Virginia. And throughout each of these units, students will engage in enriching language arts and math activities that extend their learning beyond this school year. Thank you all.
So the one major change for summer school this year is it's going to be four weeks instead of five weeks. We heard very loud and clear that five weeks was too long last summer, so we have modified that to four weeks, but we had to make sure that we, um, had enough hours so that we could get the funding for the summer school. So it's going to be really exciting programs for our, for our K through eight students. Any questions?
Colleagues? Thank you all. Uh, moving on to four to grading practice and procedures, Ms. Shepherd.
Yeah, so this is just for, um, information tonight. We will be asking you to approve this at the June meeting. The grading committee has been meeting since the beginning of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year to discuss the grading practices and procedures. The grading, uh, committee is comprised of two teachers from each school and several school and school division administrators. The grading committee's recommendation includes a few minor changes in the wording for the practices and procedures, and changing the grading scale, uh, for middle and high school from a fifty-point scale to a hundred-point scale. The recommended changes are attached to the agenda item. As the grading practices and procedures are part of the program of studies, and the School Board approved the program of studies in January of two thousand and twenty-three, we will recommend approval to modify the program of studies at the June eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, um, School Board meeting. The one other thing I would like to point out about the policies and procedures is that we will be sending home paper report cards quarterly and at the end of the school year, um, because with the, um, significant change in the grading scale from an FBN zero to fifty-nine, um, we want to make sure that our parents are informed of how their students are doing on a regular basis. Be happy to answer any questions.
What, what is the, uh, the current feel, I guess, amongst our teachers about block scheduling? What, what kind of in, input do you, or, uh, what, what are they saying to you guys?
So... I'm not hearing much about block scheduling. Mr. Hensley?
I've never heard of it.
We have the same concerns that all, you know, all people who are doing block scheduling have, uh, have, would have. A foreign language, if you have it on first semester of ninth grade year, you may not have it until second semester of, of- you may not have it until second semester of 10th-grade year. Same with math and same with English. But I don't have any other indications about block scheduling.
What year did we get a block scheduling anyway?
Well, I mean, you know, maybe that question has never come up because we've done it for a while, right? I mean, it's been...
Yeah, so we moved to block scheduling at middle school this year.
This year.
But for high school, I think we've probably had block scheduling for quite a few years. And I think middle school pre-pandemic was block scheduling. Am I wrong?
So will we have... Do we have enough data to see whether block scheduling has been a positive for our students? Or, you know, I think we talked earlier, you know, 90 minutes is a long time for everybody involved. So, you know, I was just curious if we have studies to say, you know, we're doing much better when we were having seven periods a day than when we switched to this dynamic.
Right, so I'll have to look to see what data we have. There are pros and cons to both schedules. And I think an argument can be made either way. But, you know, maybe that's something that we look into next year. It wouldn't be something that we would be able to change.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So we have, you know, the grading committee this year. Maybe we have a scheduling committee next year.
I think that's a good idea. I do, you know, just followed it. We implemented the block schedule years ago. And as you say, it's got its pros and cons and as does the seventh-period day or sixth-period day. So, but I would be interested in hearing what teachers say about that.
And I know a few weeks ago, we had a parent who was advocating for additional recess. We are going to implement that next year. Since we're talking about scheduling, we will be implementing that K through 3. Definitely K through 2, but likely K through 3 for next year. An additional recess for our K through 2 or K through 3 students. And we have enough playgrounds for that to happen at those levels.
Thank you. With this change here, you know, we previously, if I'm correct, had the thought process that a 50 was, I mean, you could give a 50 for just putting your name on the paper. Now, is that still going to be... Is that something that teachers are going to be able to utilize as they see fit? Or did we get away from that policy altogether? The 0 to 59, you get what you earn? Or, you know, how is exactly this working?
Yeah, so ultimately, teachers are responsible for the grade. That they... That a student, you know, well, ultimately, students are responsible for the grade they earn. But teachers are responsible for figuring out how to calculate that grade. So for example, if a student fails a test miserably, say they received a 25, they earned a 25 on that test, a teacher can remediate and retest. Or the student can advocate for themselves that they, you know, hey, I really failed miserably. Is there any way that I can retest? A teacher could spiral some of that work into some future assignments. And then they can go back and look and say, oh, this kid has mastered this concept. And they can adjust the grade appropriately. They can't just go in and change a grade without any justification. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, it does. However, we're just, like I said, the policy of, you know, not participating in the project, not participating in class, gets you a 50 in classroom work, that is still not in play? Or is it still in play? Or is it at the discretion of the teacher?
So the teachers have the... With this new recommendation, teachers have the ability to give a student a zero. And that was one of the only things that the entire committee agreed upon, was the 0 to 100%. And I know middle and high school, I cannot speak to elementary school, but I know middle and high school said their schools were pretty much 100% on board with the 0 to 100-point scale.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Going on to information, policy, regulation updates. Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you. Dr. Heingartner is not here, so I will do my best to present this. This policy is, this is the first reading of this policy. It will be up for approval on the June 8 meeting. And just a few, it's quite detailed, but just a few highlights. It updates the purchasing minimums. And let me see if I can read my own writing. Continues to seek best prices for purchasing of items. We can, it details how we can purchase goods and services from procurement contracts through other government agencies. And then it also updates information about sole source and emergency procurement. So be happy to answer any questions that you may have. But the intent is for you to have an opportunity to read it and ask questions at the next school board meeting as well.
Is this one that we... This one is one of our policies, or is this a VSBA suggested change?
Yeah, so Ms. Stein has crafted most of this, and our attorney has blessed it.
This doesn't change our practice whatsoever. It really gets us in line and allows us to be more efficient in how we do our business.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, going on to 5-2, food service contract. Ms. Shepherd?
Yes, thank you. So at the January 26 school board work session, Dr. Heingartner presented an update on our food service program, which was Southwest Food Excellence, SFE. And at that time, it was determined that we would continue with that organization for the next year. So attached to this agenda item is a draft, or is the contract with Southwest Food Service. And at the June 8 meeting, we will request approval for the contract. So be happy to answer any questions you may have. This is, this contract with Southwest Food Excellence is a one-year contract with four, we're allowed four additional extensions. So this would be the first extension on that contract.
And everything's still going well with them?
Yes.
We're still knocking it out of the park as far as what we're...
Yeah, our breakfasts have been slightly down all year, but our lunches are, have increased significantly.
Any other comments? Okay, going on, 5-3, the school calendar for '23, '24, and for '24, '25.
Yes, so this item is on information, and it's also on action agenda. If you don't feel comfortable doing the action on the school calendar, we can save most of it for the June meeting. But there is one part that I would like for you guys to approve, the school board to approve this evening, if at all possible. I would like to make the recommendation that the last day of school for this school year, next school year, and the following school year to be an early release. So that would mean that we would release two hours, two hours early. And that's what would need to be approved this evening because school ends in two weeks. And we do not meet before the end of the school year. So the other, the other adjustments to the 2023, '24 school year and the '24, '25 school year were made to align spring break with our Easter holiday. So currently, they do not align. And we would like to make the recommendation that the spring break align with the Easter holiday. And then also, it delineates that the open house dates at the beginning of the school year will be on Thursday instead of Friday, which conflicts with the yard crawl dates. And then we would like to do that from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. to allow parents an opportunity to get to all three schools in a campus if they have children in all schools. Or to come before work if they go to work at 3:00, or come after work if they go to work at 5:00. So, you know, we're trying to be accommodating to get all of the parents and students who want to be part of the open house to be there. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you.
Okay, going on, action item 6-1. Your motion to approve the policy updates.
I move to approve the policy regulations as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Keller. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. Discussion. Hearing none. Row call vote, please.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Betshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Housen?
Yes.
Vote carries 6-0. 6-2, the 2023, '24 calendar and '24, '25 calendar change. With the highlight to Ms. Shepherd that the last day of school on each is early release. Do I hear a motion?
I'll take a stab at it. It might be a mouthful, but I move to approve the proposed adjustments to the 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 school calendars and to make the last day of school an early release for the 2022, 2023, 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 school years.
Thank you, Mr. Gutshaw. I think that finance pursuit has come into play there.
I can read numbers, I guess.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Walsh. Discussion?
As a parent, thank you for the early dismissal last second.
Row call vote, please.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Betshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
And Mr. Housen?
Yes. Vote carried 6-0. 6-3, health insurance renewal. Motion? Please.
I move to approve the proposed employee health insurance premiums for 2023, 2024 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Rutz. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keller. Discussion. The excess of the $700,000 that we are going to apply for health insurance, that has not been worked out yet, has it?
No, that's not been decided. And I just, I have a note here that I was going to share next. But I would recommend that we wait until the general assembly meets at the end of June because we are not sure if they're going to allocate additional funds to the school division or not. But if they do, sometimes there are, there's a local match that we have to match. And for example, if the general assembly includes a bonus, then we will have a local match that we have to find. And that amount was $89,000. And I think, you know, we'll still be able to do some things in June, July, after the general assembly reconvene. So I think I would hold off on that, on adjusting the budget until we know what the general assembly is going to do.
Okay, any further discussion? Row call vote.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Betshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
And Mr. Housen?
Yes. Motion carried by 6-0. Moving on, personnel 6-4. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel?
I move that we approve the personnel as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keller. Discussion, row call vote.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Betshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Housen?
Yes. Motion carried by 6-0 vote. Moving on to Agenda Number 7, superintendent monthly reports. Ms. Shepherd, you have anything to add?
Yes, I had a few announcements. It's Teacher Appreciation League, and we are so thankful for our incredible staff, teachers and staff. The school musicals wrapped up last weekend with Mountain View High School's performance of Tarzan. It was fun to watch all of the musicals at all of our, at all of our schools and our theater, theater performance at North Fork Middle School. They all did an excellent job. Schools have been having their end-of-the-year concerts and events. There was at least one concert each night this week, and there are a few more scheduled next week. So I hope you have the opportunity you will attend. We are in postseason athletic competition, so we wish luck to all of our teams next week, starting next week. We want to congratulate Mountain View High School for bringing in the 2023 100 Best WISE High School Teaching Personnel Finance Schools. Peter Milleburg Middle School did an amazing shape competition at the end of April, and it was great to see how our students developed their interpersonal skills during this 10-week program. And we want to congratulate our 28 students who were selected as 2023 Stand Out Scholars. And we want to congratulate our SCCLA and our Skills USA students, and good luck to them as they move on to national competition. Good luck to our FFA students and chapters as they compete at the state convention in June. And then we also want to congratulate our 2023 retirees and our 2023 graduates at all of our high schools. And we have two weeks of school left. And we hope our students and our school community have a great summer with an early release on that last day.
Any questions from Ms. Shepherd on the monthly reports? The attendance, I think the state has one of the requirements for accreditation. The attendance is back in the force since COVID hit, correct?
Yes, yeah. So the goal is that our students, less than 15% of our students will be chronically absent, which is students missing 10% or more of the school year. And the only school that we have that may make that accreditation rating is North Fork Middle School. All of our other schools are slightly higher or significantly higher than that 15% chronic absenteeism rate.
Do we have, or we're going to look at a plan to try to improve that for the next school year?
Absolutely. So our, we had plans this year. And actually, most of our schools improved their chronic absenteeism rate last year to this year. And we will continue, continue to work on those plans to get our students in school. We have to remember that during the pandemic and the year following, we asked kids to stay home. And that created a habit that we have to uncreate. So we need to make sure that school is a place where students want to be in and that we're engaging students in their learning.
Unless they're sick, and we do want them to stay home.
Yes, if they have a fever, please stay home.
If you have no more questions from Ms. Shepherd, we'll go to board member comments. Who would like to start?
I will.
Mr. Keller?
Day 20. I've got money on the under of 9 o'clock for tonight. So don't you guys, you know, pontificate too much. I do want to thank our teachers, especially, partially, those that teach Reese and Ellen. I know that's a challenge. And I think that right now, we're in the midst of SOL testing. I hope that all kids do well on that and take that for what it is. It's an assessment. You know, some kids get too crazy about it, and some kids don't take it seriously at all. Somewhere between those two probably lies the right way to approach those things. So good luck to kids as they, as they do that. And that is all.
Thank you. Ms. Rutz?
Um, yes, thank you, teachers. Um, you know, you have a tough job, no doubt, not at all, um, and we need you. So, um, thank you for all you do, and, um, you're vital and you are important every single day to not only those in, in, from us, because we don't want to teach, and we probably cannot teach, so we appreciate those that do. And, um, you're important to the folks, your colleagues, as well as the children and the parents that you serve. Um, as far as the s- the staff here, I know we'll see you over the summer, but, you know, it's been, it's been a tough year. It, it, it doesn't seem to get any easier. So, um, thank you all for your hard work and, um, always doing it with grace and taking our calls and, and, uh, everything that you do and, um, being gracious and explaining things and, and working things out. Um, it's, it's a blessing. Um, lastly, um, we had a comment from the, from the floor about the extra money that, um, was left over, um, that we didn't plan to have. Um, that was, um, you know, uh, it's not quite allocated yet. I think we, um, have until Ja- July first. Uh, but I do think it, it would be worth the conversation. Um, I get comments and, and, you know, ask questions all the time. Uh, you know, sometimes our, our school resource officers are vital to our, in, our safety. They're vital to the environment that we work in. They're vi- they're vital to our kids. And they're, and they're human. So they have doctor's appointments. They have to show up in court. They have family. Um, there seems to be something going on in the sheriff's department because there's a lot of pregnancies going on, so you have, you might want to watch, staying away from that into town. Um, but we, when, they're missing in the mornings or they're, we, we don't have enough. Me personally, um, after, you know, the Nashville shooting, you know, and knowing that there was choices when there's a, someone with a weapon on the inside of our doors and somebody that's not, um, it made, it made a difference in that. And, um, I still am of the belief that a trained officer, um, is our best defense for the safety of our children and the safety of our staff. Um, I don't know if you remember several years ago, we had an incident at Central, um, where Victor Green, you know, diffused a situation that could have been, you know, it just wouldn't have been a, a good thing for us. Um, he's trained. He knew kids. He, he knows what's going on. I would rather see at least two SROs of it was, if, if I could do that today, I would put that in our schools, at least two our SROs. Uh, that position was cut from the sheriff's budget. It was an ask. I don't know if our supervisors fully understood that it was, uh, cut. I don't know how deep they go into the budget. Um, but it's, it's something that, um, you know, what he's asking for is a floater, a supervi- a supervisory floater. So it would take some weight off of, um, Whitney Mall, and it would provide coverage when there are, um, you know, outage, your, our SROs are out. So, um, I would like to have that discussion. Um, and I know that the budget is, you know, not set. Um, I don't exactly know how that all affects us at this point because, you know, um, two months ago, you know, finding money didn't seem to be an object. So, um, and so I would, I would appreciate a conversation about the possible reallocation. I think the board of supervisors might owe us a favor. Um, and I know that the sheriff's department, um, not only wants that position, they would take on the debt in later years. So that is it.
Thank you. Mr. Guttjow?
I'll echo what Andrea Marina said about our staff members. A big thank you to everyone for everything they do, day in and day out, blood, sweat, and tears. It's much appreciated. Um, you know, we're looking forward, I know you're looking forward to the summer, and we're looking forward to next school year. Um, so a big thank you to everybody. Yesterday I was at Rotary, and the presentation was the life program from Central High School. That's taught by Ms. Smith, and I saw a couple of students there who were at Central when I was there, uh, Bryce and Alex, and it was great to see them. They came up and gave a presentation on what they do. They do a lot, actually. They do a lot of field trips. They go to Harrisonburg on Fridays at JMU. They have a partnership with them. So good to see that program performing well at Central, and, uh, it was good to see them yesterday.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh?
Um, just to echo, um, thanking our teachers and staff for, um, for the amazing job they do and have done this year. Also, this week was also Nurse Appreciation Week or Day, and we have, um, amazing nurses in all of our schools who deal with a lot. Um, I was shocked by the number of visits the elementary school nurses get, and I can't believe two can handle it at Robinson. Um, let's see. There are a number of retirements. A lot of them, um, are, are very personal to me because my kids have had them. You know, Connie Pangol, she is the, she's the principal at Triplett, but she was an assistant principal when my oldest was at Robinson. And, you know, there's, we're, we're losing a lot of teachers to retirement, and I just, I wish them well. Um, we're, we're losing a lot of experience. Um, I want to wish the graduating seniors well. Uh, we are, we're knocking it out of the park with what our kids are doing next, whether it's college or career in technical education or going right into the workforce. Our kids are, are prepared for what's next, and, um, and the whole division deserves recognition for that. Um, the last thing, well, no, Darla Mumaw, who was here earlier, she's an excellent example of an employee who started, she started as a parapro, and then she got her teaching license, and she just, she just continues to grow and learn. And I really appreciate all of the parapros who do go on to get their teaching license. Um, it's a lot of work, and, um, but we have a number that do that, so, uh, I appreciate them. Uh, the last thing is, I, I've been seeing in comments here and there, and I think it was at our last board meeting, there was a comment that, um, administrators and school board staff leave at 4:30. Well, no, they don't. Or if they do, they leave and they come back. Um, every event that I have gone to this spring, there has been a school administrator and SBO person, one of, e- either Melody or one of her cabinet members there. And so I just, and, and principals are, they're always, they're always on call. So they deserve respect, and they've been getting some disrespect from the community about, uh, not having very hard jobs and not deserving what they're paid. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week is a lot. And they are there in the evenings, and they're there on weekends, and they go to job fairs and all of that. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that they are working really hard. And, uh, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow?
Well, when you started the, uh, the school year, it was at the time that we came to the realization that we have, uh, over the last six years lowered expectations and standards. And we articulated the fact that we had to turn that ship around. And I made analogy at that point, and subsequently, it's like turning an aircraft carrier around. It's not something you can do, uh, in a heartbeat. It takes time and dedication and knowledge, or you can capsize or run underground and do all kind of crazy things. And, um, so I think that what we can say is that we see that great ship starting to turn. And, uh, we added a specific leg of evaluation to, um, to the superintendent, uh, which is an academic, uh, standards, uh, evaluation point. Uh, and so we wanted to raise ac- raise those academic standards, realizing that discipline and attendance would be the other two stools, which would help us to create a greater, um, chance of success and, uh, success for our, for our students. So I think that's starting to happen. Uh, and I think we'll see that borne out, uh, as we get some information back over the next several weeks. One major concern, uh, though, throughout the year, is that there has been one kind of subtext that never seems to go away, uh, and that is the concept of the disruptive student. Uh, and there hasn't been a day that's gone by, certainly not a week that has gone by, where there hasn't been some kerfluffle based on the fact that a classroom had to be cleared, or, or violence was threatened, or any number of things that kept learning from happening, uh, and kept us from achieving the highest level of performance that we'd like to accomplish. Now, I don't think anybody up here is in favor of allowing the disruptive student to control things. Okay, kind of like letting the inmates run the asylum, right? But we don't know what to do. Corporately, we don't know what to do. Some of the reasons for that are that legislature and others who designed these things for us do so in the Howard Halls of Richmond, and they don't have to deal with life in the trenches. And so they come up with, if you remember from one of our work sessions, we had a slide of literally a score of acronyms of things that we had to do as teachers, as administrators, as the school board, to make sure that students are identified as IDE, 504, other categories are not shortchanged. But in coming up with that wish list, um, it has created enormous amount of administrative, uh, and learning burdens, which every school in our system has felt this year, and has been pretty high on the pucker factor around the community. And we have to field, figure out how to, how to deal with that. And it's not easy because, um, because it's not, because it's complex, and because we're trying to deal with almost a conundrum where we're given a set of expectations from the legislature, which they don't have to do. I'll use, uh, my second analogy, and then there's, um, we were told when that slide came out, it was kind of labyrinthine. It was a labyrinth to get through all these things. Well, the original labyrinth was a building that had a half man, half bull in it. And if you got caught in that set of rooms, you're going to be devoured by that bull. Uh, and, um, the hero in this myth, Theseus, had one of the gods give him a thread so that he could figure his way through all that. And by following that thread, he was able to find the Minotaur, the half bull, and to destroy it. Um, I don't think we have a magic thread, uh, but I do think one of the things we've started to talk about is making sure we use every available option and making a path or a, a, a standard operating procedure of dealing with these situations uniformly, quickly, and effectively, as much as we can with what the rules allow. And then if that doesn't work, we have to go back and ask for legislative relief from these people who are making pretty unrealistic, uh, rules. Um, it's nice to see, to say that every student will be given every opportunity, every day, every minute, but the amount of time that it takes that dissipates our staff to deal with that student who either wants to or can't help but be disruptive has caused enormous amounts of frustration and angst, uh, at every level in our school system. So, um, my plea is that we try to find the most efficient way we can of dealing with this. It may be, um, it will be difficult, but to be as efficient as we can. But to, um, but to go to the powers and authorities, when we find that this is, uh, is, uh, is not doable, and, and, and lobby for some sort of realistic way of doing things, rather than let the legislature, uh, heap upon us those acronyms that, that keep us from, from achieving the kind of, uh, rising expectations in academic achievement, uh, that, that we've started, and which won't be able to be fulfilled until, until we come to grips with this, this problem. I'm not saying it's the central problem, but I am saying it's a problem that really causes a lot of anxiety, not only because it keeps people from learning and focusing, but because it really brings into focus very questionable behaviors on the far part of people who are either tolerated or found some way to get around. So, um, so I would, uh, say after what I perceive is very highly successful year is that, uh, this, this is kind of, uh, this is one of those things that we can't afford to ignore or just cope with it and say it's tough. I think it's something we have to concentrate on, us finding specific, uh, ways of, uh, finding the way to the Minotaur so we can slay him. That's it.
Thank you. I don't have a few things. Um, first of all, uh, the past two weeks have been enjoyed for me. And, uh, it started with the Shandor Scholars, uh, and I convinced my colleague, uh, Mr. Keller to join me. And, uh, what, what a wonderful event that was, and the setting was unbelievable. First time I've been in that building at the, uh, at Shandor Caverns. Uh, Mr. Heisman spoke about Mountain View FFA banquet. Uh, every time I attend one, it's just amazing what those young men and women can do, and they, and, and they take pride. It shows. North Fork, uh, FFA banquet is next week. Uh, the staff recognition banquet was held, uh, last week. The retirement reception was held, and I brought you all a, a program. It was on your desk that Ms. Jeff provided you. And, uh, a couple Sundays ago, I attended my first fine arts performance. And that, you have the program on your desk, Cinderella Junior, and it, I, I didn't count them. It's about two and a half, uh, dozen young men and women. And I was amazed how well-trained they were. They knew their lines. They sang. They moved the props. It was just amazing. In one hour. Uh, one, Wednesday, I attended Ms. Rum's government class at Central and seniors, and I talked about local government, school board policy, what they liked about high school and whatever. I wished them well. And, and I asked about their finance class, and, uh, I don't know, Mr. Heisman, I think you brought this up. So I thought about the situation about making change, and one young man in that class gave me the proper answer, how to make change if you just give the amount and what the dollar amount they gave. And I'm about done, but I'm gonna, this is nearly in. I found this in the newspaper, North Virginia Daily, classic peanuts. You all ready for this? Peppermint Patty raised her hand in a class. She asked, "Before this semester ends, madam, may I ask a question that has bo- bothered me for years?" Oh, no, madam. Nothing embarrassing, heaven forbid, as they say. This is something that has driven students mad since schools began. No, it's not about Shakespeare or Francis Bacon. I know all about him, although I admit I know nothing about her. No, this is a problem that has bothered every kid who has ever gone to school." And this is what she asked. "Why is it you never call on me when I know the answer, but you always..." answer, but you always call on me when I don't?" How cute that is, and as one of the speakers said, this is Thankful Thursday, and please remember your mothers this weekend, whether you have them or you do have their memories, and at that note, we adjourn the meeting at eight, uh, what is that, thirty-eight? That close? Have a good weekend.